Today is the seventh day of October. The time is nine o'clock. The board is in session. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. I'd like you to also give us your identity, starting over here. We'll go around.
Abstinent Hallie, HR.
Attorney, I'm Perkins.
Attorney, I'm Perkins.
Attorney, I'm Perkins.
Attorney, I'm Perkins.
Erin Brady, assessor.
John Blake, chairman.
Jennifer, I'm a prosecutor.
Tiffany Wharton, prosecutor's office.
Candace McCall, prosecutor's office.
Dale Cox, Laurel's wife.
Laurel Cox, prosecutor's office.
Tracy Smith, prosecutor's office.
I'm Andy, prosecutor's office.
Richard Beck, development services.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
Real IT guy.
Trent Trimple, county clerk.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are.
Okay, I would accept the motion to effect the change on the agenda.
I move to amend the agenda by removing item number number six, twelve key, agreement number fourteen, five eighty-nine, four twenty-five at the department's request.
Uh, yes. Is there a second to that motion? Second. We've got a second motion to change the agenda, to remove that item. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we now have, first thing up is employee recognition. We've met the Coxes. And we'll read the, I've asked Commissioner Daley to read that recognition.
Laurel Cox.
Laurel Cox began her journey in the prosecutor's office as a runner, steadily advancing to receptionist and legal secretary, before stepping into the role of legal assistant in October two thousand and seven. Although she supported high profile criminal cases early on, her true passion emerged in the child protection unit, where she now serves, has served for nearly seventeen years. Driven by compassion and dedication, Laurel works tirelessly, and her commitment empowers us to secure the best outcomes for children and families across the county. Thank you, Laurel, for twenty years of exceptional service, especially in that child, very special place.
Thank you. Okay, is there anywhere, anyone from the prosecutor's office wish to say anything about Laurel and her twenty years of successful service?
I would just add, Mr. Chair and commissioners, that Laurel has been called out by many people in the CP field, particularly by Judge Ellis, who is the, probably the foremost expert in the state of Idaho on child protection. And he is dubbed Ada County CP unit, including Laurel, who's a big part of that, as the best in the state. He has repeatedly said that at conferences, he is, realizes that he's spoiled by the work and the product we give him, and realizes that we've got a good unit, and Laurel's a big part of that. We appreciate your service.
Well, thank you. And you ought to say something here, aren't you the head of this, of this unit?
I am not. I'm not in the prosecutor's office. I'm TCA.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you. We've got a number of people that might want to be in this picture, so we might want to go outside. We'll go out in the foyer and take a picture of everybody in the chair, along with the Coxes. How you doing?
Good.
Good. Good.
I like your tie.
Thank you.
Would match you.
Proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Month. I have my purple tie on. And I've asked Commissioner Davidson to read the proclamation before we adopt it. Go ahead, Commissioner Davidson.
All right, the Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the month of October twenty twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, domestic violence is a serious public health, safety, and social issue affecting individuals, families, and communities in Ada County. And, whereas, domestic violence may include physical, sexual, emotional, psychological, financial abuse, stalking, and harassment by a spouse, partner, and family member, or someone with whom a person shares a child in common. And, whereas, victims of domestic violence are often isolated, fearful for their safety, traumatized, in the need of resources, support, protection, and justice. And, whereas, Ada County provides vital services to victims of domestic abuse, including the Ada County Victim Services Center, which offers emergency services, counseling, medical forensic examinations, case management, safety planning, legal assistance, civil protection orders, and other social services. And, whereas, law enforcement, Ada County Prosecutor's Office, and other justice system entities are committed to holding offenders accountable and supporting victims in navigating civil and criminal remedies. And, whereas, Ada County condemns domestic violence in all its forms by encouraging every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. And we support the goals of educating Idaho residents about domestic violence awareness and prevention. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, does hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Ada County, and we encourage Ada County citizens to recognize this special observance.
Okay, thank you. I would accept the motion to approve the proclamation.
I move to approve proclamation as read, designating March, uh, March, the month of October twenty twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Ada County.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. I think it's, it's significant. We, we, we always support October as Domestic Violence Month, and we kicked that off, uh, out at the, with the Women's and Infants' Children's Alliance out in Meridian. And any other comments? Would you like to say anything?
We appreciate the support. And it is, it is important to recognize Ada County as recognizing this today, so thank you. And also for all the work that everyone in our profession is doing, improving Ada County Victim Services Center.
And I might add that this morning is, is the executive staff of the Ada County Victim Services Center, they're meeting this morning, as they do every month or every quarter, or something like that, and they go over, and that's where a lot of these domestic violence cases end up, is in our domestic care and our Ada County Victim Services Center. We appreciate that. Anyway, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Come pick it up and we'll... You're here to get this, right? Okay, now we're in the new business. Looks like you're gonna kick off the new business, Mr. Clerk.
I don't know if anything I want to say is new, but...
We are likely to have our distinguished clerk here, Mr. Trent Trimple. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, commissioners, we're in the heart of an election right now. While we're closing out the fiscal year and starting a new fiscal year, sure, there's a lot going on in our office right now. But I would like to highlight some important dates for the upcoming election in November. The most important one, the closest one, is October twentieth, when our in-person early voting kicks off at eight sites around the county. We've expanded that. We're gonna have at least one early voting site in each city of the county, and that'll go till October thirty-first. So people that wish to vote in person early and possibly avoid some lines on Election Day, that's the place to go do it.
Are you on disputing lines on Election Day?
You just never know. There are times in the day where there's a rush in certain precincts. Some of the precincts will be more competitive than others, depending on the races on them. So there, there could be lines. We don't anticipate a massive turnout for November. But it just depends, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, you tend to see long lines, people waiting eager to cast their vote.
Do these early voting stations, do they have the ballot on demand? Because you get people from all around.
Yep.
Like, for instance, if I go down to the Benjamin, I live out by Centennial High School, so I'll have this particular type of ballot.
Yep.
If somebody lives here, they'll have a different ballot.
We, we will have ballot on demand on all those early sites, so anyone in the county can vote at any one of those early voting sites.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
People should know that, and that's why I wanted to put that out. Anything else? Go ahead.
We also have a deadline of October twenty-fourth to register, as well as request an absentee ballot. So it's the same day. That was a change to the legislation this year to make it easy for people to remember. So October twenty-fourth, they can register up to that point and request an absentee ballot up to that point as well. We've had eighty, close to eighty-three hundred absentees requested already for this election, of which about seventeen hundred have been returned. We're excited for that. We also have, we're, we're planning the time and date within the next couple of weeks for a ribbon cutting for the commissioners to come out, for the remodel of our elections headquarters. I think that'll be a great thing for the, the public to see.
We'd like to see the fruits of our labor as well.
Yes. So all of those things are happening, and we're excited. Things seem to be going smoothly. It has been a challenge gearing up for the election with the remodel and getting everything back in and changing our processes because of the new layout of the facility. But we're managing it, and we're getting through it, so we're excited.
You got through the ballot situation you had with the, with the certain local government?
We did. But we're, we're continuing to explore options and make some, some changes out there so that we can maximize the space that's out there. Because that's the whole reason for the remodel, is to gain the extra space, so...
Yeah.
And that's it for my office.
Okay.
Any questions on the election, or?
Any question on the election? I have no, no questions. It's gonna be, it's, it's, it's a large election, and, and that's why I asked the question about, because there's a lot of things on the ballot in different, in different areas. And I even, I found out the other day that there's even a contested cemetery district election, which is unusual.
I'm not sure that will drive turnout.
I don't think, well, I don't think it will actually, but I mean, it's, it's just, I think it's unusual to have a contested.
It is.
Cemetery district. It's Dry Creek Cemetery, incidentally.
There are two bond issues on the ballot for Starr, as well as Boise.
Are they actual bonds or the override? The Boise one? It's an override.
There are special levies, municipal levy election.
Yeah, so it doesn't require a super majority. So they're override levies.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Meridian is what? Meridian is, is as well.
Meridian...
Yeah, Starr has one.
Yeah, Meridian's is a safety levy.
Yeah, Meridian has one, Starr has one, so does the city of Boise.
Yeah.
As I recall, Boise's eleven million?
Uh, let me check here. It's... I don't have the total on here, but it's nine dollars and eighty-nine cents per one hundred thousand of taxable assessed value.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've read. I could be wrong, but I've read that's eleven million. And part of it is for, is to acquire and maintain.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is here, that to raise the amount of five and one-half million dollars each for two years. So combined two-year levy would be eleven.
Right.
Million dollars.
Right.
Where at the fairgrounds is the Garden City Early Voting Place gonna be?
It is at the, um, I'm gonna get the name right, Western Town Building.
Western Town, okay. All right, any other questions about the upcoming election?
So how, how many precincts are gonna be?
We're gonna have one hundred and eighty-nine precincts. So just a few precincts won't participate, but that'll be at one hundred and thirty-two polling locations. And we're expecting around a twenty-five to thirty percent turnout, based off historic trends in the past for the similar.
Closer to twenty-five or closer to thirty?
Who knows?
Well, this will be unusual, because there's only one mayor's race in the, in the bunch, and those usually drive turnout a little more than, than, but there's, there's some, there's some interesting city council races in, in the bunch. I think Eagle has seven people running for two seats.
That is correct.
And it's, and it's, it's not a majority, it's just plurality. So one of them, so two of the two can win with smaller percentages. Which I think is, is, is okay, because these runoffs never change much. Just cost more money.
They do.
Thanks to your ballot verifier, we may, we may, uh...
Hopefully, we can avoid those.
Avoid, avoid runoff and avoid a, uh...
Recount.
Recount.
Does Eagle still have runoffs?
Uh, they have runoffs for the mayor. I don't think they have runoffs for the city council. I think that's the one that they do have runoffs for, is in Boise and Eagle. They have runoffs for mayor, but I don't think they have runoffs. Because, see, that's a local ordinance thing that they do. All right, any other questions, or?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now proceed. We have catering permits. The first one is to ratify a catering permit that I signed last week. I'll accept the motion on that one.
I'll move to ratify and approve the catering permit previously signed and identified on the agenda, approve the remaining catering permits and licenses as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have our claims journal. This is a claims journal for the claims dated up to October third. Is there any question on any of the claims journal? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal dated October third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have several personnel actions. Any questions or issues on the personnel actions? Not, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have the assessor's office. Is there anyone here from the assessor's? Oh, here we go, we do. Welcome to our meeting today. Do you want to give us any good news, or should we just proceed to business?
Well, good news. Residential reappraisal, we've got about forty-four thousand parcels due for twenty twenty-six reappraisal, and we're about halfway done right now, so we're making good progress. Board of Tax Appeals hearings start next week. We've got thirty-nine distinct appeals. Two have been settled. The vast majority of the remaining ones are commercial, so we've got quite a heavy lift in front of us, but I'm encouraged at the progress, and I'm sure we'll do well.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, tax cancellations, more of the same. You can see that the vast majority of them are for homestead exemptions received after road closure, so nothing unusual there.
Okay. All right. Any questions or issues with any of these tax cancellations? Because, again, correct, I'll, I'll give my usual pitch. These are not actually cancellations, these are reductions. And, but the code says they're cancellations. The people all listed here will still pay property taxes. This is just usually for the homeowner's exemption. In fact, it's all for the homeowner here. Any other questions from, from anyone from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Just as, so that somebody who may not have listened to this before, what is the homeowner exemption, and how does, how does this? What is the explanation of what we're doing here in terms of the homeowner, homeowner exemption? What is it, first of all, and secondly, how does this work?
Homestead exemptions reduce the tax liability, reduce the, reduce the assessed value by a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars maximum.
For someone living in there.
Yes, for someone living in the home. And, and these tax cancellations are for homestead exemption applications that were received after the road closure, after the primary road closure in May.
Because there is an initial closure of the application, but then if they comply any time during the year, it's prorated, correct?
Correct.
And that's what these are.
Yep.
Yes. Well, thank you. That, that is clarification. All right, any questions? I'll accept the motion on the tax cancellations.
I move to approve the tax cancellations for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion. And you've heard the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is treasurer's office. Do we have anybody here from treasurer's office? Apparently, we do. Okay. So next item up will be the approval of the minutes for September twenty-third and, and September thirtieth. Any questions or additions of the minutes? Here are none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have development services, an application for approval of the final plat for four buildable lots.
Feather Creek Ridge Subdivision.
All right, any questions or issues on this plat? Do you have one, you want to say anything? Give us a little pitch.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and commissioners, thank you. Yeah, final plat for four residential lots, five acres each, southwest of, yeah, southwest of Kuna in Ada County. Staff reviewed the plat, finds that the applicant has addressed and satisfied all the conditions of approval. The plat complies with our code, and recommend that the board authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat.
Well, we'd like it to comply with our code. Any questions from the board?
No, I guess, I guess that's a good explanation, that there's the process that this has gone through to get the, our, our approval or disapproval.
Okay, I will accept the motion.
I move to approve, approve, have the, uh, application two zero two three zero one zero six zero SBF, application for final plat for four buildable lots, Feather Creek Ridge Subdivision. Authorize the chair to sign and stamp the documents.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a couple of change orders from operations. These are all three. Change order number one is a decrease for, uh... Correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, these are all unused funds on the projects that will come back to the county's budget.
And these are all complete?
Correct.
All right, okay.
What's a VRF?
VRF.
It's a heating and cooling system.
Okay. For these, so the accessory is now, they now have cool air. They have had to apply sometimes since, since the replacement. Because they were, they were out of cooler for a while.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. During the process of replacing them.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, I'll accept a motion on change order number two to the, to agreement number three zero eight one two.
I'll move to accept change order number two for agreement number three oh eight one two as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Change order number one, Ada County Sheriff's Office. That property remodel, and evidence remodel, decrease of eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars, and this completes this project. I'll accept the motion on this one.
I move to approve change order number one to agreement number three zero eight two six as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, number, change order number one, Ada County Sheriff's Office, CTC, tenant improvement project. Any questions on, on this project? It's, it's done. There's fifteen hundred and ninety-four dollars left over. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve and accept change order number one for agreement number three zero nine four two as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next we have.
Mr. Chairman, just as a note, I think we need to note here as well, because there, I, I heard on the radio some saying, saying that a government project never meets its budget. They usually go over budget. So I think this is an example of the kind of thing that our staff helps us do when we budgets something.
Shock, the news didn't get it right?
Yes, amazing.
Shocking. Well, we'll correct it then.
So congratulations to our staff to help us do that.
These are typically, we do a lot of these, and they're typically returning money back to their fund balance because we, we were able to complete them under, under budget. Thank you. All right, we have Barber Park and Education Event Center. We have a wedding scheduled for next September. Nine twenty-six. I don't know, this is twenty-five, is it twenty? Is it twenty-five or twenty-six? I don't recall. It can't be for twenty-five because that's already passed.
I was gonna say. If, if we're retroactively approving it, it is.
They don't say that. So let's, let's approve agreement number three one one two one. The Barber Barber Education Event Center.
I move to approve the Barber Education Event Center, agreement number three one one two one as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have a number of agreements to approve. There's thirty-seven of them there. Most of them are just removals, we, are not removals. Most of them are renewals. We've removed one because it was the, it wasn't the correct agreement, and so we'll have to replace that one later. Okay, I've reviewed these, these documents. Is there any white congratulations on any of the agreements?
Just, just some, one, we were able to go to this, pure wellness center, D, is listed as number D. That's an example of how we're helping people get back as productive members of our community, and it's a, it's a valuable part of contribution to our community, so.
Yes, we went to that and gave them a proclamation that we had, that we had signed on. It's a, it's a good program. Okay, any other questions?
Soilwater, number B is a soil water conservation district. They, they help us do some of our stuff in managing our lands, because we own lands the county does, and they help us do that. Number I is the City of Eagle, Garden City, Kuna, all the, all the, all the cities cooperating with us on preparedness coordination, which is, I think, important.
Yep.
Terry Riley Services, the victim service center that we just gave a domestic violence participation award. Several of them are victim service center as well, health and welfare and some other things, let's see. Polling places for the clerk, dealing with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Forensic pathology, emergency, so that we can have emergency services there if we need them. Landfill, we have, we have lots of them here, so if people are interested in, a lot of these, as you said, are renewals. And if people want to see those, they can look in the public record, because these are all public record, they can look at them.
That's correct. All right, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have the Indigent Services, weekly indigent items. I've reviewed those. Any question or discussion on any of the weekly indigent items? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to accept the recommendations of the Indian Services stack, staff as listed on the summary of cases for October seventh, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business to be brought for the board while we're here? Hearing none, we'll be adjourned.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today is the seventh day of October. The time is nine thirty-five. The board is in session. All three Commissioners are present, acting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District. Identify yourself.
John Blake.
Paramedics.
John Blake.
Oh, that's the Duncan Communications?
And we have real IT guy. Okay, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
No changes to the agenda, okay. Our first item of business is a claims journal. We want to pay your bills.
I'd like for you to, please.
Any question, any questions or issues on any of the claims journal? Not, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the EMS claims journal for October third, twenty twenty-five as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minute for the September twenty-third and September thirtieth meetings. Any questions or issues with any of the agenda, or any of the minutes? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have four agreements. Any que, and these are all renewal agreements. I might add that in case anybody's watching, the county can only agree up until the end of the fiscal year. Our fiscal year ended September thirtieth. That's why these agreements all have to be renewed, and that's what we're doing here. Any question on any of the four agreements? Hearing none, I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the four agreements, EMS agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we get the best part of the meeting, our EMS update. Go ahead, John.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Executive Director, Deputy Chief or Chief, whatever you want. Deputy Chief.
Well, I'm kind of in a gray area right now.
Yeah, it's a gray area.
Mr. Chairman, I am the Deputy Chief of Operations. Yesterday was technically my first day in the job as chief. And signature authority will come over to me at the beginning of the month, November one, after Sean actually vacates the seat.
Assuming he doesn't change his mind. I don't think he's gonna change.
I don't think it's gonna happen. I, I don't think it's gonna.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I think Sean is officially in the giddy category right now.
And that's good, good on him.
The only thing I have for you is to note that our fiftieth, our celebration last week that we all attended, thank you very much, went well. There were a lot of people that put a lot of effort into making sure that went well. In particular, Mark Babson and Stacy Nguyen did a lot of work in preparation for that event. We had a nice showing and, and a lot of good conversations, so I'm glad to see a lot of our partners joined us.
Kind of a few, few good news stories out of it.
Yeah, that's right, we did. There were a couple.
I hope they were all accurate.
As far as I know, they were. I had a chance to meet our new hires yesterday and present to them in the morning. I'm always happy, as I've mentioned to Commissioner Daley earlier, that I always have to see fresh, eager, enthusiastic faces coming to Ada County Paramedics. That's quite good. We have a contingent of folks that went back to Ohio to look at our ambulance manufacturing facility at the request or invitation of our supplier in Salt Lake. They're, our small contingent is back there looking at the manufacturing process. We've received those ambulances with a few defects, things that need to be addressed, and so we are investigating that with them. Why and how that happened, they've already addressed it, and this is part of our, the end of our process to, to to tie in with the manufacturer and see how they're addressing some of those issues. So that's happening right now. And the only other thing I have for you is that I am going to be away the next two weeks. I'll see if Chief Rain or Chief Shabbat will be available to come down and do the update for you.
You taking a vacation?
I'm getting married on Saturday.
Oh, congratulations. Congratulations.
Apparently I decided to put all of the major life events all together.
At the same time.
All together.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations. That's always a big event.
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's all I have for you.
I don't recall getting our invite.
I'll, I'll see where the mix-up was.
Rod could perform the ceremony for you.
All right. Anything, anything else? Any questions, any questions besides Ryan's, Commissioner Daley's? Okay, hearing none, we'll be adjourned.
Thank you very well. Thank you.
Thank you.